I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, held June 5th, 2012 at 6:00 PM at the City Council Chambers Building. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Dowling?
Here.
Councilmember Alinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Howdige?
Here.
Councilmember Norman?
Here.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Piper?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. The next item is Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to ask George Gaylord if he'd like to come up and lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
George. The next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, councilmember, councilmembers, just to advise you that as directed by the council, the speed limit on Sixth Street has been changed, and if you've been out there, you'll notice that there's some advertisement, some education, and the police department will be helping with that education process as well. Also, last week, the Recreation Center hosted Operation Graduation to keep all our students who were celebrating their graduation safe. It was a very successful event. And our fire department is setting up for their vacation fire school and also their very popular Safe Sitter Program, so if anybody's interested in that, they can call the fire department and get registered. And that's it. Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmembers? Yes, Mr. Pratt?
On Thursday, May 29th, I went to an event at Riverfront Park sponsored by two groups who I really support. One is called Verdi Valley Parenting Partnership, and the other is Parents as Teachers. And I got to observe the work they do with young kids, trying to get them interested in reading and their education early on. In part, it's funded by Verdi Valley Medical Center and mostly funded by First Things First, which again advocates for early educational opportunities for kids, and they talk to parents about the importance of reading to kids. And I was really impressed with seeing five- and six-year-old kids really interested in books. So it was close to my own heart. It was a great event, and it's nice to see those things going on in our community.
Thank you for sharing. That's great. Council? Somebody told me that Councilmember Howdige attended the VFW event on Memorial Day.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Right.
As a matter of fact, it was a fair crowd. I kind of had the whole place flooded, but it seemed that that's the day that people want to go out and do other things and stop and remember our military and what they've done for us. While it was a good occasion, once again, I think we should have had a whole lot more people there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know the vice, or the Vice Mayor, the city clerk and I have been talking about possibly having a Cottonwood function at some time. She has said that she gets a lot of comments from different people, so Vice Mayor.
The Catholic Church also had one.
Okay.
So there was a couple in the community.
Several. Did you go to that one?
Mm-hmm.
So thank you all who did, who went and remembered our veterans, and they're very deserving. Okay. I've been camping at Dead Horse Ranch State Park, so gonna have a short report tonight. Aren't you happy? I attended the groundbreaking ceremony for Mingus Avenue, right up here at the corner. And let's see, Vice Mayor was there, Councilmember Norman, and Councilmember Dowling made it to that.
Sure.
We also might want to remind folks, do you want to remind folks, Doug, about the detours and that sort of thing and not going through that area?
Yeah. Westbound Mingus at Willard is closed through traffic. If you are coming eastbound on Mingus, you can go north or south. Or if you're coming on Willard, you could go either way on Willard. But in terms of traffic going through westbound, that's not possible. And we do ask the audi, or not the audience, the public, not to drive through private property to try and get around the closure. That is against the law. It is, and it does create a danger for both the workers and people that use the private property. So we are doing some additional notices. We have continued to tweak the detour to try and make it as understandable as possible, but we do ask the public to bear with us that this is just going to be an inconvenience, at least for a couple of months, until we get that project completed.
And I did have lunch with some ladies this past week who said, "I can't believe you're really putting a roundabout there." And I did share with them, and I just don't think the public really knows the particulars about it, but we did a Safe Routes to School study. We collaborated with the school, and actually, that came out of the study, Safe Routes to School. And it was recommended by the school, as I understand it. So there's, there is a little bit of history there that people maybe don't really understand.
You know, the other thing that we are doing as well is we're also posting signage that indicates the businesses on Mingus Avenue are open, so.
Great. I know I got a call from Brandy's who said their business had dropped, and so I let Dan know, and he talked to you, I'm sure, and they're talking about putting up some extra signage for those businesses. So thank you very much for being sensitive to that issue for our businesses. On May 17th, the city manager and I met with Connie Diedrich of the Boys and Girls Club, and she shared with us their program for the summer. It sounds like they'll be bringing some of the Sedona kids down on a bus and using this facility here. She wanted to make a few changes to the building that were fairly minor, wouldn't you say, Doug?
Yeah.
And just kind of for safety issues. And so I had to leave a little bit early, so Doug finished that up and assured her that what she needed to do would be okay. On May 22nd, I attended a meeting at the Verdi Valley Medical Center where our healthcare community was invited to talk about healthcare needs in the community. And I know that there was, I had another obligation with the chamber, and you probably were there, right?
The quarterly luncheon.
The quarterly luncheon.
With Ken Bennett.
And Ken Bennett spoke, so the Vice Mayor attended that at the same time.
And so did Councilmember Norman, and were you there?
Councilmember Norman, and who else was at the chamber?
I guess that was it.
Okay. May 23rd was Chief Casson's retirement, and on May 24th, the city manager, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Norman, and Officer Clint Cox from, Clint Combs, I wrote that wrong, Clint Combs, from our PD, attended the Verdi Valley Intergovernmental Meeting at the Yavapai Apache Nation. And we learned about the nation's new transit service that they're working on, and the city's wanting to help in any way we can to kind of get that loop going over to Camp And Officer Combs gave a presentation about the Terrorism Liaison Officer Program and the Arizona Counterterrorism Information Center. Yavapai Apache Nation gave a report on their Specialty Courts and Truancy Initiative. And the gentleman who made that presentation was Robert Chavez, and I just think the world of Robert. He was actually an intern when I worked for Supervisor Chip Davis, and he's really an awesome person. And Linda also worked with him, too. And we had an update from our city manager on the Verdi Valley Regional Communications Center. This month, on inside Cottonwood, the city manager was on vacation, so I did both interviews. And I interviewed Kristy Statler of the Arizona Parks Foundation, and she talked about a new initiative that supports state parks, heritage funds, and a grant program to cities and towns. And this is, as you know, the bill that was presented by Representative Karen Phan and supported by 56 out of the 60 House members, and every single person on the Senate to allow state parks to keep their revenues that they make in their parks. That was vetoed by the governor. So about two weeks ago, the Arizona State Parks Foundation started working on this initiative. They have to have 172,000 signatures by July 1st. So if anybody is interested in supporting that initiative and getting it on the ballot for the November election, let me know, and I'll connect you with the people that can get you a petition to carry if you should desire to do that. And we also interviewed Chip Norton of Friends of the Verdi River Greenway, the Verdi Watershed Association, Natural Resource Conservation District, and Prescott National Forest Community Forest Trust. And he was also a key person in the Verdi Front planning process, which is still ongoing. Our Charlie Scully's been very active in that also, as appointed by the city manager, and Cottonwood has taken a lead position in trying to get that thing off the ground. These interviews can be seen on www-verdivallietv.com, or they can be seen on Channel 2, either with Southern Link or Cable 1 TV, or you can see them on YouTube under Verdi Valley TV. And if everybody gets a chance to listen to the one by Kristy Statler, that would really explain to you the initiative, the ballot initiative that's going to be coming up. That's my report. Moving on to the next agenda item, call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda for discussion. If the item is on the agenda, then you'll need to wait till that item is up for discussion. The council cannot engage in any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Okay. Kami Mulcair?
I brought a handout for everybody.
Okay. If you'd like to give them to the city clerk, and she'll pass it out.
There's ten, so everybody can have one of each.
Okay. One page each?
One page each.
Okay. And did you, do you have one for the city manager and the attorney?
Yes. The one that they gave.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just had to remember which one to hold on to. There we go. Okay, this one, and these go, wait, they go back.
Sorry.
No problem.
My name is Kami Mulcair. We own a business here in Cottonwood called Bedrock. We live in Cornville. On May 12th, The Verdi Independent had published an article, "Cottonwood Seek Slower Speed Limit on Sixth Street." In the article, Morgan Scott talks about wanting to improve safety where kids might be playing. He also says prohibiting vehicles except for specific deliveries without, with a special permit, heavy truck traffic except for deliveries would also be permitted, prohibited on Main Street through Old Town. And he goes on to say, "The chief area of concern is between Mingus Avenue and South I researched The Verdi Independent as best as I could. I couldn't find one article that had a commercial vehicle hitting, striking, a child playing. I did find some articles where parents ran over their children, and I'm certain that we're not going to eliminate parents from driving on residential streets. He talks about prohibiting large vehicles, special permits, you know, and no trucks down in Old Town. How do you think the deliveries are made? If I go to Gray Fox, which is about a mile from here, are you expecting me to go through Clarkdale and back through Clarkdale to Cottonwood? Am I going to get pulled over with every truck that goes through Main Street and asked, "Where am I going?" This is crazy. This is just plum crazy. There's a couple articles in there from 2005 when the Mingus Extension was being built, and what the purpose of the Mingus Extension was for, to get traffic out of downtown major city areas where people were buying. So what have we done? We're going down Mingus Extension. We have trucks coming out of Clarkdale using the Mingus Extension, so we're not driving through Main, Cottonwood, by Safeway and Bashes, keeping the traffic where it's supposed to be. But Morgan Scott feels that Mingus is a problem for trucks. This is crazy. This is crazy. You'll see a piece of paper in there, how much money Bedrock, one business, we're one trucking business of many in this Verdi Valley. In three years, Bedrock spends for fuel, registration, and heavy use tax. Our right to be on the streets in this state. Who else spends that kind of money to have the right to drive on the streets of Cottonwood and Arizona? The average citizen pays 250, I'm sorry, $150 a year for registration and $2,400 in fuel. A fraction, a fraction of what I use in one month. There's a subdivision in Sedona called Baco Beyond. We were in that subdivision when it first started. We could haul material to those homeowners. In the largest truck, you can haul 24 ton. If you want to get 24 ton in that community now, you have to pay for four delivery fees because the people that built first decided, "We're here. The rest of you can suffer. We don't like the trucks in our neighborhood." What's good for the goose is not good for the gander in this case. I just want to say, if you don't support the local businesses in this town, they're going to stop supporting you. We are making the economy for this city. I put in there, $1,123,000 is how much fuel I bought in city limits in three years. You received sales tax on that money. The trucks in this community are making this economy go. Thank you.
Would you like to contact them with some of the correct facts? I don't think that she has those correct facts from the newspaper.
Yeah, we can do that.
And probably the agenda or the minutes from some of our meetings might explain it a little bit more.
Sure.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you. Tom Mulcair?
My name's Tom Mulcair. I'm Kami's wife, I mean husband. The thing is that every time that you pass an ordinance, you take a piece of our freedom. Every time they pass an ordinance in Washington DC, they take a piece of our freedom. And it's going down to the fact that we don't have any, we're not going to have any freedom left. I see the difference between when my dad was a contractor in this valley and I'm a contractor. Just in the contracting business, they've made so many laws and so many things, it just takes away from you. And if you just, if you block the streets off, that's taking our freedom away. Even though we drive a truck instead of a Mazda, it's a lot, you're still taking our freedoms away. And I don't think this, this is what the council wants. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. You are appreciated. Mr. Priggy, Red Rock Skydiving Update.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'm Carl Priggy with Red Rock Skydiving here in Cottonwood. So we'd like to thank the city for allowing us to operate here for the last five years. In that time, we've had people come to Cottonwood to skydive from all 50 states now and 43 countries. In particular, two weeks ago, a Japanese movie star by the name of Kengokora came out with a film crew and made three skydives with us, filming it from all kinds of angles for his next movie project. We are also now in discussions with three other airports to provide aviation services at those airports, and we are also ready to make another proposal to the city of Cottonwood to provide aviation maintenance and possibly other aviation-related services here as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the updating. Dr. Richards?
Dr. Bob Richards, 1495 East Classview Drive, Cottonwood, Arizona. Mayor, members of the city council, and staff. I'm here to talk about the bathroom at the Kids Park. Last December, I was a participant in the Cottonwood Christmas parade to the degree that I was organizing and giving instruction to the Verdi Valley Cyclists Coalition Riders. As per usual, my cup of coffee in the morning kicked in, and I made a trip to the portable toilets for quick relief of the diarrhea I was about to experience. First porta potty that I encountered was tied off with a yellow ribbon, as if it was a crime scene, and it may have well been. Second unit was almost filled with fecal material, and the urine was filled with urine as well. I don't know if someone had purposely plugged the urinal basin to prevent the fecal or not, but the combination of the two can only be described as gross. Large porta potty inside of the fence was usable, and I assume the smaller one was as well. I was embarrassed as a citizen of Cottonwood and a member of the Parks and Rec Commission that such facilities were on display for the parade participants, including the mayors of neighboring communities. The present toilet facilities on city property there are not a good advertisement for our community, and this is the only park in Cottonwood that does not have a permanent flush toilet system. It's my understanding that permanent toilet facilities have been proposed for the Kids' Park for several years, but have always been removed from the budget for reasons I fail to understand. This area is of high use by soccer players on the weekends and various festivities that you, most of you or all of you attend. I've looked at the budget since 2009, and the Kids' Park bathroom is filed under those items to be financed by the 1% sales tax. Since the budget of 2009, 2010, up to the present budget of 2012, 2013, the bathroom at the Kids' Park has been continually pushed to another fiscal year. In the present 2012, 2013 budget cycle, it is scheduled now for fiscal year 2015. When 2015 arrives, I expect it will be placed in fiscal year 2017. In talking to members of the staff, this project's been talked about and promoted for maybe 10 to 15 years without any action. Looking at past budget history, the two porta potties at the Kids' Park could very well be eligible for historic building status before permanent bathrooms are built. If a permanent bathroom with flush toilets and enough stalls to accommodate the expected use cannot be funded by the 1% sales tax, then I would encourage city council to look at the enterprise funds as a source of funding. I don't believe it's reaching beyond reasonable thought to consider a bathroom at the Kids' Park to be a wastewater treatment facility on a small scale. Certainly not as spectacular as the proposed wastewater treatment facility at Riverfront Park, but still it is a conduit and collection point for raw sewage, which seems to be the responsibility of funding by the water and wastewater enterprise funds. I sincerely request and hope that action can be taken by the city council to get permanent bathroom facilities planned and built within the 2012, 2013 budget cycle in the Kids' Park, not only for use of citizens of Cottonwood, but our visitors as well, whether via the 1% sales tax, the enterprise fund, or other sources. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. Preservation of Certificate Designating Cottonwood, Arizona as a Bicycle Friendly Community by the League of American Bicyclists. And we have Nikki with us today.
(Inaudible).
This is call to the public for the item. Did you want to speak before they do, or usually the public speaks after the item?
It has nothing to do with the coalition.
Oh, it doesn't have to do with what's going on tonight? Okay, excuse me. Yes, come on up, Mr. Piper.
Just wondering if you'd even forgot me.
No, not at all. I had your, not at all.
I'm here on one of my pet peeves, and I'm first of all, admire Tom and his wife for what they're doing and trying to do and getting pushed down for. My pet peeves are bicycles. Out here at night, on the streets, no lights. Where is our place for us? Don't they enforce it? Isn't a bicycle, when it's on the street, subject to the same rights that a motorist has? I see signs all over the country, big bicycle, it says, "Bicycles, share the road." How else do you read it? They don't. And when you're out there after dark, a little old flickering light doesn't get it. Can't they do something before we get some of these kids killed out there? They are not on in the bike path because their lights ain't bright enough to even see the bike path, but they're out there. And anybody that's out there after dark, I know, has seen the same thing that I've seen, and there's getting more of it all the time. And now, on a footnote, I'm still opposed to this destruction on Mingus and Willard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Okay, Nikki. We have with us tonight, Mr. Mosley.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm representing the Community Development Department and the Bicycle Advisory Committee. Many of our members are in audience tonight because we are excited because we are trying to make strides to make Cottonwood a more bicycle-friendly community. It does take a lot of work. I know that this was a 2012 strategic initiative from the council and from the city manager to win bronze as a bicycle-friendly community. And as you know, because many was bike led, we did have these signs, and thank you, Mayor, for joining in the bike ride, and these will be up soon, as soon as we get ADOT's promotion.
And Councilmember Alinsky.
Councilmember Alinsky, thank you.
Rode on his wedding day.
Yeah, rode on his wedding day. We had several very committed people out there riding that day. It was a really fun event. But now I'd like to turn it over to Chris Mosley. He is the Executive Director of the Coalition of Arizona Bicyclists. He came up from Phoenix tonight with his wife to present the award on behalf of the League of American Bicyclists. So here's Chris.
I'm, as Nikki said, I'm Chris Mosley with the Coalition of Arizona Bicyclists, and I was asked, and it's an honor, to make the trip up to Cottonwood tonight. I am a native of Arizona. I was born on McDowell Road in Phoenix, spent most of my summers over in the fortunate Spent most of my summers over in the, fortunate to spend my entire summers over in the pine and strawberry area. And we used to, as a kid, we'd come down the hill and swim in the Verde River and the Verde Valley. So we made our trek down from the high mountains down into the valley often. And so my fondness of Arizona just goes back to my birth. I love it. I love what goes on here. So on behalf of the League of American Bicyclists, which represents some 58 million bicyclists nationwide, it's an honor for me to be here and to present this award, to present the award of bicycle-friendly community at the bronze level. And I'd like to take a minute to recognize all of you and many individuals who have been involved in this process, because this is a process. And it's actually quite an honor to have this designation. And in Arizona, you become one of only nine communities who have actually made the effort, stepped up, because it's not easy. And as some of you know, and if you haven't had a chance to talk to Nikki about how challenging the application is, take a minute and ask her. She'll let you know. And all of her advisory committee that helped her and all of those that did. But first, I'd like to recognize Mayor Jones, who, it takes a great mayor to have a vision to see the importance of these things, to support and to implement the right components to fulfill a vision. This award and designation is one of those great important components, as we believe. And the Verde Valley has a wonderful, great group of bicyclists. And as you know, with the rework of Highway 179 into Sedona, that drew the MS Ride this year, although they had some challenges in early April with weather, like we all did in Arizona, those are the kind of things that come with designations and with recognition on a national level. I'd like to recognize City Manager Bartosz. Did I get that correct?
Yes.
And I'm going to try not to massacre any names. Vice Mayor Pfeifer, council members Alinsky, Dowling, Hadege, I learned that one. Norman and Pratt. We appreciate a great city and their leaders who support efforts like this. Really would like to all, to recognize Nikki, a city planner who went through this process. And as you know, I get to review these applications. They go to Washington DC to the League of American Cyclists, and they come right back out to many of us by way of email. I've never filled one of these applications out. I'm not sure I want to, because they are, there are so many components that it reminds me of a midterm project or a university-level project. Takes us back to college to have to finish these. So as I again would encourage you to get to know this process, because it's a very distinguished level to begin at bronze. There are many communities that have tried within Arizona and have not hit that, because it is far-reaching, the information that is required and the effort that is being put forth by the city, things that have to do with education of our children, education with other bicyclists, interaction with the police community, the amount of bicycle paths, the amount of bicycle lanes, the amount of shared road areas. All of those things add up to these, and there are additional levels to reach. And in the nation, the top level of platinum, there are only four communities that have reached that level. And we have a number of communities in Arizona that attempt that every year, and they're getting closer. But it's a challenge. And so we keep striving to do better and to increase our status, if you will, with the league. And I'm no less grateful to recognize the Verde Valley Coalition that is really in your community here, Randy Victory and President Bob Richards. This, in my view, is one of the best bicycle coalitions in the state. Absolutely, without a doubt. Most involved, knows how to interact and get things done. As I said, the city of Cottonwood joins many other communities in Arizona, a total of nine. You are one of nine to reach.
Out of 91 cities and towns.
And when you really look at those numbers, it means a whole lot more, and the recognition is even better. The city of Cottonwood, I believe, has always embraced an excellent lifestyle, which includes the outdoors. Recognition, as was reported from a skydiving operation in Cottonwood, outdoor operations and activities and availability brings people to the community. It has been recognized across the country in tough economic times that people will travel where they can enjoy the outdoors. Bicycling is a big part of that. They want to be able to come and ride and do a tour and see the countryside on a bike. And there are many of us that actually plan our vacations around our bicycles. My wife's with me. We ride in tandem, probably around five times a week. In Phoenix, it's at 5:00 AM this time of year, but we enjoy it, we live the lifestyle, and we love it. So to Mayor Jones, to all of you, I would like to present on behalf of the, to the entire community and those that have worked hard, very hard, the award of bicycle-friendly community, bronze level. Thank you.
Can we, I'd like to get the council to come up and, for your photos. And Mr. Gaylord, the city manager, and Nikki, if you would come up and accept this. And then after this, we'll get all of the members of the bicycle community to appear. So we're going to have to squeeze in. Okay. We have the tall guys.
There we are, on the website.
And we have everybody that's in the camera after the function. Now we're going to, we're going to get the bicycles up there too. There is a member of the police department. If it's not enforcement, enforcement's a big part of this. But we are going to get the bicyclists too. Okay, here with the bicyclists. Okay, if we can have all the bicyclists here tonight from the Verde Valley Cyclists Coalition, President Bob, Randy, and I just want to say that even long before we had a Verde Valley Cyclists Coalition. Randy Victory was working on these issues, and I just want to give him my personal thanks for all these done.
I love this.
Dr. Bob, would you like to hold your, please? So, let's see. Are the short people? Okay, come on.
I'll stand right there.
I'll leave while I'm right around here.
Yes. Come on, you've been a coalition. Come on. You've been a big part of this. Come on. We've got one person that didn't get up. Come on, there that should have gotten up. Okay.
Wonderful.
Sure. I ride.
Thanks, Chris.
These are going there.
So how'd the wedding?
Now you're all married.
Not too scared.
That's cool.
Thank you, council, for all of your support and legal assistance. You're awesome. I still have the spurs on my leaf from when I was a kid crawling in the park. I know, I wrecked all my toenails on my writing songs. And I was writing Dead Horseless Thongs, if I can remember, 49 years ago. Don't do it. Okay, are we ready to move on?
Now the room's cleared up.
The next item is approval of minutes. Did I miss anything here? No. Regular meeting of 5:15:12. Any comments on the minutes? They look fine to me.
I move we approve the minutes of 5:15:12.
Second.
Okay, the vice mayor made the motion, and I had twins on the second, who was first. And Councilmember Norman made, did the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, comments regarding agenda items are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. Item number eight, old business, none. Item number nine, consent agenda, no items. Cruising right along. Item number 10, new business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is resolution number 2642, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County Emergency Services Department for the continuation of unified emergency services.
Madam Mayor, council members, this is an annual intergovernmental agreement that the city's entered into with Yavapai County since 1986. And the agreement establishes a unified emergency management organization for the purpose of preparing plans for the preservation and safety of life and property and making provisions for the execution of these plans in the event of an enemy attack upon the United States or in the event of a, any peacetime, natural, technological, or man-made emergency or disaster within the county or city. Madam Mayor.
Any questions? It's just an ongoing, long contract, and thank goodness the county's willing to step in and do this and bring us along as partners.
And for under $5,000, I think that's quite important.
Absolutely.
I move to approve resolution number 2642, approving the intergovernmental agreement at Yavapai County for unified emergency management.
Second. Mr. Hadege made the motion, the vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City clerk, please read resolution number 2642 by title only.
Resolution number 2642, a resolution, the mayor, city council, and the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County Emergency Services Department for the continuation of unified emergency services. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item number two is the annual consideration of appointment of a vice mayor. And as the council communication said, I've put this on the agenda every year because I believe that it is the council's decision, and it should come to the council. And we've had the vice mayor Karen Pfeifer on council, and it's just the council's pleasure. Do you want to continue with that? Does someone else want to take a turn? What is your, what are your thoughts? What's your pleasure?
I'm fine with vice mayor continuing.
I think she's done a great job.
She's done a fantastic job.
And she represents the city well.
She looks nervous.
And people can see her.
More brain cells going. And the important thing is, is that if you want to be vice mayor, you need to be good at public speaking, which she does a great job. You need to be prepared. When I come to council and ask for those three-week vacations every few years to go back and see my family, you've got to be prepared to work hard, huh? And she's always, something that's very important to me is she's always at the strategic initiative planning meetings. She comes, she stays for the whole thing, and even if she has to take off work, which is important. So, Mr. Pratt?
We should ask her, are you willing to do this again?
Yes, sir. I'd be proud. Okay, so we appreciate you and your support of the citizens of Cottonwood, because that's the main thing. I think that your position of working with the chamber, you know, puts you in a place where you need to be for the city council a lot of times. It puts me in a place where it's flexible. I can leave when I need to. It's the most flexible job that I've had in a long time. And I do appreciate the fact that when I have multiple obligations, a lot of times if she's available, I call up and she'll take over that, one of those obligations. And if she can't, then, you know, Mary Ann's asking the rest of council to please help. And they've stepped up, too. Yes, they have. Everybody does their job whenever they're available. So, Mr. Pratt?
Is it time to make a motion?
It is.
I would be proud to. I move to appoint Karen Pfeifer to serve as the vice mayor of the city of Cottonwood. Say it.
Okay. Twins seconds again. So, Mr. Pratt made the motion. Which of you twins was first? Mr. Alinsky seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and congratulations. You're welcome. Thank you, council. All right, council representative appointments to various committees related to intergovernmental matters. This is pretty much just sort of, we don't often change this too much, but it does, I like to put it on the agenda to give the council opportunity to input. And Mary Ann made a list for us of who does what. The only one that I would ask Mr. Alinsky about is on the Yavapai Water Advisory Committee, if the council wants me to stay as the chair, we could ask Tom Whitmer to be the alternate, if you like. I know that it's been really difficult for you to make the meetings, and he's always there anyway.
Yep.
So that would be up to you, but that could kind of let you off the hook.
Yeah, and I don't mind. I think you did call me once, I think, once, and I couldn't do it.
Yeah. I'm almost always there. But if you'd like to stay on, that's fine, too.
I'm fine staying on. I really am.
Okay. So we'll just leave it as it is?
Yeah.
And he can always serve if either of us can't attend, too. He can be there for us.
I just wanted to make an aside, I think it's important that he's involved in any of our water committees.
Yeah, and he is, I think.
With his education, and I know he's willing to, but.
Absolutely.
Need to push those committees, too, to accept him.
There's been a question asked of him that he couldn't answer intelligently. Yeah, I think he attends Karen's meetings for the NAMW. He attends the WAC. He attends the WAC TAC. He attends the Bureau of Rec meetings. So yes, absolutely, we really like his participation and guidance even, because he's, you know, our technical person that understands the technical parts of these committees and our, you know, water issues. So I don't think anybody objects to him being fully engaged in any of our water issues with us. Are there any changes on, is everybody happy with the committees that they're serving on, and are they willing to continue to serve on the same ones?
We can drop one, though. We can drop NAFTA.
Okay, NAFTA is going away. And CAT won't have a board, I don't suppose, huh?
I don't guess so.
So you can strike NAFTA because it's going to.
We only have one more meeting this month, and that's it.
Participating, and Councilmember Norman, I'm sure, will finish up her duties on that board. And thank you for serving. I mean, gosh, how many years now?
Since '06.
Since '06? She moved on to the Verde Valley Transportation Planning Organization, so she's still with transit. And how are the Verde Valley Rio meetings going? VV Rio?
Good, very interesting.
Do you find opportunities for Cottonwood to participate in that organization, or?
Well, Casey Rooney, you know, is going to those meetings, and he gets real involved and represents Cottonwood very well.
When do they meet?
They meet the first Friday of each month.
At what time?
In the morning at 9:00.
So you can strike NAFTA, because it's going to.
We only have one more meeting this month, and that's it.
Participating, and council member Norman, I'm sure, will finish up her duties on that board. And thank you for serving. I mean, gosh, how many years now?
Since '06.
Since '06?
She moved on to the Verde Valley Transportation Planning Organization, so she's still with transit.
And how are the Verde Valley Rio meetings going? VV Rio?
Good, very interesting.
Do you find opportunities for Cottonwood to participate in that organization, or?
Well, Casey Rooney, you know, is going to those meetings, and he gets real involved and represents Cottonwood very well.
When do they meet?
They meet the first Friday of each month.
At what time?
In the morning at nine.
I guess, is this a time when I can talk about the TAC and Tom Whitmer's involvement? Is that?
I would think so.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to advise the council that, oh, about six months ago, Lloyd Barnett, who serves on the TAC, advised me that now that we had hired Tom, that he felt comfortable in resigning from the TAC, and to allow Tom to come on. Of course, this decision isn't made by me or Tom, or it's, you know, it's the WAC that makes the decision. Well, there is a process that happens that, it goes to the, to the TAC first to make a recommendation to the WAC. And.
Maybe for the audience on TV, you should explain what happened.
Okay. WAC is the, I forget, I forgot about that. Thank you, vice mayor. WAC is the Yavapai County Water Advisory Committee, and all of the cities and towns in Yavapai County have a seat on this board. And there's a technical advisory committee, which is comprised of people appointed by the WAC. And Lloyd Barnett has been on the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, since its inception, as well as Tom Whitmer. Tom Whitmer's been on that board since 1998, twelve years, something like that. But anyway, so there is a process, and I'm the co-chair of the TAC, or the WAC, and so I've, I've tried to keep the process open. The reason it goes to the TAC is so that it sort of stays out of the politics. And usually, TAC members choose their own, you know? And in the other side, on the other side of the mountain, it has been, the cities and towns have appointed someone from their cities and towns. We have one from Chino Valley, one from Prescott Valley, one from Prescott. And over here, we have Abe Springer, who is with Northern Arizona University. We had Lloyd Barnett. And after Bob quit, it went unfilled for quite some time, and then we were able to get Jean Marie Haney from the Nature Conservancy. But anyway, I did hear from Mayor Doug Van Goghig, who didn't feel that Tom should be on the TAC. He thought that, he doesn't believe that, as he put it, we should make the same mistakes that the city of Prescott has made, appointing people from their cities and towns. And I just want the council to know what's going on, and I haven't really had an opportunity to advise you of that. So, you know, whatever the group decides, so usually, the Prescott side picks their TAC members, and the Verde Valley side picks ours. We used to do this with a meeting of the Natural Resources Committee, but that's disbanded. And we, after Bob left, there was not a staff person to do the work, and so no one else picked up that obligation. So we haven't met. So, the, our Mayor Van Goghig is asking, has been asking me several times to meet, to talk about this, and he, he has specifically stated that he doesn't think Tom should do the job. And I disagree with that, because, you know, if you look at the Coconino County Water Advisory Committee, they have, you know, members of their TAC are from the county, and, and if you look at the Verde, or the San Pedro Partnership, you know, you've got the county on the TAC, you've got different people. So whatever it is, this issue, you know, it's just going to go where it's going to go. We're supposed to meet to talk about this. I continued to ask that it go through the process, that it go through the TAC first as the co-chair of WAC. And the TAC didn't have, Jean Marie and, and Mr. Springer weren't there. They had, at the last TAC meeting, so it was going to have to come to this TAC meeting. And I didn't think there was any hurry, because when Bob left and Jean Marie was on the, on the TAC, or was under consideration, Mayor Van Goghig was the chair of, of the WAC at the time, and we took many, many months to, you know, figure out where we wanted to go. So we're going to meet and talk about, you know, who the Verde Valley wants to appoint, and what will be, will be. I would really like to see Tom get on the TAC, but as I said, what will be, will be.
With his knowledge, technical advisory would be a perfect place for him.
It would be a perfect place. He has the knowledge. He has, you know, he's been on it for twelve years. If you talk about someone, Mayor Van Goghig talks about hydrologists, and in fact, one of the guys that applied is on the, he was a hydrologist, he's with the C-WAG, the, what do, what does the, what's that stand for yet? Citizens Water Advisory Commission. So he wouldn't even be from the Verde Valley. But.
We can't do anything about this as the council, right?
No, but I just wanted the council to be aware of what's happening, so.
I have people. Oh, my, there's a citizen.
Yeah. Okay, so just, so everything's okay with these boards and commissions for now? So I think we, do we need just direction? Or no, we have a motion?
I didn't say a motion.
Oh, there isn't a motion. It's just direction, I guess. So I don't think you even need to contact any of the organizations, because it sounds like they'll all be the same. All right. Thank you very much.
If it ain't broken, don't need to fix it.
Okay. Council appointments. So we're done with that. Consideration of approving funds in the amount of $3,500 from the council's contingency fund for fencing materials for the community garden, and a let's-move luau. So did everybody get to, thank you for writing the council communication. Mary Ann wrote that for us. And Mary Ann's actually been heavily involved with the community orchard, and I do see, like, fruits on there when I drive by now. I think it was kind of her brainchild in the beginning, and it turned into a let's-move with the First Lady event. That's going to be really exciting, when we can get schoolkids in there to pick some of the fruit.
So is this, excuse me, is this for the community garden, or the community orchard?
The orchard. The orchard up on the Willard Extension. And so she went and, and also, I'd like to just thank Dan and his crew, they have done an immense amount of work. A lot of physical work out there. They put in all of the, in fact, the last time council gave us money for this project, it went to, it had to go to actually them, their department, because they had to put in all of the irrigation and stuff. It's actually watered with reclaimed water, and so they had to do all of the irrigation and all of that. So we really appreciate Dan and Howard and all of their crews, too, that have worked so hard on this. But the, the city clerk kind of was looking at it and thinking that it could be better protected. It's almost full, that little piece now. And then we'll be moving across the road when staff gets time, you know, to start planting trees over on that side. We have quite a large acreage there where we could plant some more trees for the community.
What's the variety of fruit that we've got out there now?
We've got apricots, figs, apples.
Lot of apples.
Peaches?
And the rest are peaches.
Did those little peach trees make it? They don't look like they're.
It was very hippie.
Yeah. We got some as a gift from the Home Depot from our last cleanup. We had some extra trees that we planted, so, I, well, how long will it take? Well, we have an arborist. What does he say?
Well, unfortunately, he's leaving.
Oh, no.
Our arborist, yes.
Oh, no.
Which I was very sad to hear.
Yeah.
Because he's done a great job with the orchard and with the trees on the side of City Hall here, and Jonathan was really great to work with, and unfortunately, he's, he's leaving the city, so we won't have an arborist working for the city anymore. But when I talked to him, he wasn't sure if they were going to make it or not.
Okay. I know that members of the community are just, they're itching to plant more trees. They want to donate more. I know Verde Valley Medical Center and Fit Kids have donated some. We've had different community members. You want to talk about the little plaque things that you're ordering for some of them?
Yes. As part of the community orchard plan to not only provide healthy food to the community and the kids, we turned it into a memorial tree, where people donated a tree in the memory of a loved one. And we get a, you can get a, usually, there's silver-edged plaques that our maintenance crew sets into concrete, and there's four of them out there. I have one for my tree. The Clemensaw Museum had one put in. There was one from a private individual in memory of their, of their mother, and so that's also available if they want to, to pay for the materials and labor to put those in. So, right now, it's full, but if the peach trees don't, don't make it, then we'll have space to replace them. Hopefully, it wasn't, it's not with Texas fruit rock, because you don't want to replace them if they have that. But other than that, the orchard is really doing great. There was fruit last year, actually, and we have two fig trees that were donated by a gentleman. And there's several apple, but right now, the majority are the peach trees that were donated by the, by Home Depot. So I, there's two empty spots there, there's two trees that I still need to buy that people had reserved to place those trees, but it was right before winter set in, so we didn't want to set them in over the winter, so those will be coming in pretty soon. But it's really nice. It's pretty open right now, so we have, the mayor and I have talked about in the past about maybe getting a fence along the sidewalk there, just to give it a little bit of protection, so, you know, kids aren't riding their bicycles in there, or people walking their dogs through there, or whatever. So I did, I did get some quotes on some fencing. The fencing that we're talking about putting in is this white picket fence, it's four feet high. It's vinyl, so it will, it will last, and it won't need to be painted. It's low maintenance, which is nice.
They look good.
So the cost to put that style of fencing in is going to be approximately $2,500. Of course, the, the labor will be completed with our maintenance crew. But just for materials, it's approximately $2,500 to put fence along the sidewalk of the garden. And that, that plot is, it's a triangular-shaped plot, so on, on the east side, it's, there's barbed wire fencing that separate it from the parcel, whoever owns that parcel, and then there's barbed wire fencing along the south side.
I've seen it.
Between the residential area of the house that's there.
And then when we move over, when, across the street, when that time comes, we won't need any fencing, because it's actually inside a fenced-in area already, I guess. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that, that barbed wire fence? Or is it pretty, I mean, can animals get in there?
Um, I think it is barbed wire fencing.
Okay.
They have the gated, the fence.
It seems like it's, yeah, there's a big gate.
The gate fence, yes.
So, I mean, I don't think we'll need fencing then. I could be wrong. Am I wrong? Guess we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
You know, I really, I haven't really noticed. I know that they've got the gates that they open and close.
Right. It seems like it's pretty protected there, for some reason, to me.
Yes, because it's set back from the road, whereas this, this side of the road, the orchard, it's pretty much just along the road, just separated by the sidewalk.
And Dan's talked about, you know, having to move so people can access it, you know, fence off something inside there, but we'll cross that bridge when it comes. But we have a lot more acreage over there for, for a community orchard than we do in this little pie.
I wanted to move back to the side of the road we're talking about tonight. I think this is a really great thing for the city to have. I think we should support this. The luau I went to last year, and I thought it was a terrific event. It was really well-attended, and one of the doctors from the hospital there was, did a demonstration of healthy grilling.
Your grandson was here, right?
My grandson was here, of course. And I got to hand out the prize, and it was to a girl I knew. I knew her folks well.
And she really, she really appreciated it.
Rachel.
Yeah. Well, last year, Bobby Guzlin invested in some of those things, but I'm not sure that she's going to be able to do that this year. And then I purchased all of the laces and the decorations, and I, I think I'd rather ask the council to do that this year.
Well, I was going to say, I think we should do this.
Yeah, do we have a date for the luau?
It's going to be the second Saturday of August again, like it was last year. From 2:00 to 4:00. And I met with the Fit Kids gals, and we just had our agenda from last year, and last year, we spent so much time planning this. And this year, it's going to be a piece of cake, because we've already done it once. Fit Kids is going to provide all the food like they did last year, and, so the Verde Valley Medical Center will be partners, and Fit Kids will be partners again. So I appreciate the council. If we don't need the $1,000, it'll just go back into the general fund. We may not need that much, but we'll see. But it was a great party last year. So, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve $3,500 on council contingency funds to be used for fencing materials for the community orchard and a summer luau.
Second. Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and then, I'm not sure, but, and this isn't on the agenda, but we might be bringing it before the end of June to council to talk about the Vietnam Veterans' Wall. So I'll talk to the city manager, and you missed the last meeting, so we may be coming back to council for a little bit more. Okay, so, the next item is claims and adjustments.
I move we pay the claims and adjustments.
Second. Council member Norman made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is item number 12, Pine Shadows Collections Matter, Executive Session, ARS 3843103A3, and/or for discussion or consultation for legal advice with the attorney or attorneys of the public body. Discussion or consultation with the attorney of the public body in order to consider its position and instruct its attorneys regarding the public body's position, regarding contracts that are the subject of negotiations, impending or contemplated litigation, or in settlement discussions conducted in order to avoid or resolve litigation. I make a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
The mayor made the motion. I think Mr. Pratt was first. Was he?
Close enough.
Okay, Mr. Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll resolve into executive session.